Good morning, I am Councilman Robert Stokes, Chairman of Education, Workforce and Youth Committee. Also joining today is Councilman Bullock from the Ninth District, Member of the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Coram from the First District, Member of the Committee. Councilman Glover, Thirteenth District, Member of the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Vice President, Sixth District, Member of the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Councilman Torrance, Seventh District, Member of the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
This is informing here of degree requirements for city positions. Before we go any further, I'm sorry, I missed it. We have Nina Thimless from the Mayor's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We had Nikki Thompson from the President's Office, who is virtual. We also have Michelle Tooth from the Law Department and Talisha Utz from the Labor Commission's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And we also have our CEO, Christopher, our CEO in the Mayor's Office, Christopher Shorter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'm informing here in degree requirements for city positions for the purpose of inviting the city solicitor, the city administrator, director of Baltimore City Department of Human Resources, the Baltimore City Labor Commission, and Department Director of the Mayor's Office of Employment Development to brief the city council regarding practice of requiring certain degrees for certain city positions and discuss if eliminating such a degree requirement would be detrimental or beneficial to the recruitment and retention of quality city employees. This actual bill, resolution was introduced by Councilman Glover from the Thirteenth District. You have opening remarks?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to my colleagues, members of administration, guests that are in attendance and guests that are online. Our call for this informational hearing because in order for us to address several issues that we have in Baltimore City, we must establish two things, investing in the human capital of the city and improving the quality of life issues throughout city services. We can no longer do that without getting city workers and city residents to work and retain here excellent workforce and city government. As of September the seventh, 2022, the city of Baltimore had three hundred twenty-five job positionings listed on the website, including two hundred twenty-five general employee positions, four promotional positions, and ninety-six transfer positions. Over the last decade, we have heard about the rising cost of tuition and the raising of student loans debt and the decline of enrollment into four-year degree programs. Over the last thirteen years, the United States has lost three point seventy-two million students after being told that if you go to college, you will be able to earn the living wage and be able to move into the middle class. A lot of that has shown to be not true. This rings true to the Generation X counterparts due to degree inflation, which began two thousand and eight as a response to the recession and decline in the economy. In turn, much Generation Y has opted out not to pursue the four-year agreement, degree requirement, but to enter the workforce directly or to obtain skills and certifications, which are far less costly than a four-year degree at college. This affects us larger here in the city of Baltimore because many of our residents have acquired some level of skill training or certifications which will allow them to work in some degree we have available for city agencies. This is important to solving the poverty issues that we face because of systemically black and brown people have historically become ostracized due to the lack of a degree. Jobs that require the degree disqualifies sixty-two percent of adults over the age of twenty-five, including seventy-one percent African-American and seventy-nine of Hispanics. Compare that to the seventy million Americans that are skilled through alternative routes such as Class A certifications, GNA, CNA certifications, and skills like customer service and project managers. In March of this year, our governor announced that the state of Maryland will be dropping its degree requirement to fill open positions within the state. This is followed by a national trend that include private companies such as Apple, Google, IBM, Dell, and Bank of America. The state of Maryland is working with opportunity at work to identify workers that skilled through another role. They have developed a software technology that matches a candidate's skill set with roles employers are actually trying to fill. Much like surveillance technology and AI technology built into many of the software performs that common HR departments use is inherently biased against black and brown people because it kicks out applications that do not have a degree requirement. Moving forward, I want to say that adopting this and similar practices of Baltimore City would allow US, excuse me, would allow us to create a pipeline of talent which will keep our city positions ready, always staffed for years to come. As our high school prepare our youth for administrative and vacationing new skills and tasks, and as our community college career students certify our young adults in tech, mechanical, and healthcare professions, we open the opportunity for them to be able to make work and money immediately. This would allow them to be successful financially without having the weight of a student loan. Let's be real about it, college is not for everyone and not every career requires a college degree. Just ask the greatest generations of Baltimore built this liberty at the best of hand skill right here in Baltimore City, you know, from the war times. Some of these individuals have no degrees, they're able to provide income for their families, and they are great citizens for the city of Baltimore. Please do not make this a mistake, this is a movement, or this an attack on colleges or universities because it's not. Colleges and universities play a big role in our society, but we should be reminded that there's a large population of people that cannot afford to go to college financially. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Glover. I just want to mention a few things. I know sometimes the directors of agencies can't be here, but this is important. If we as committee members have to be here, then if the directors can't be here, they can send somebody. I just find it appalling that some directors are online, but they're not in this committee. This is important to employment here in the city. So if you can be online, you can be in this chambers. We are required to be here as committee members, so we expect it as council people that the directors should be here also. So I'm going to committee announcements, actually, agency reports, Law Department.
Michelle Tooth, on behalf of the Law Department, we approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you.
All right, good morning, Chairman Stokes and members of the council. My name is Chris Shorter, I currently serve as the City Administrator for the City of Baltimore. Our DHR Office of Classification and Compensation is responsible for the establishment of the minimum qualifications for city positions. This office works collaboratively to revise those classifications and qualifications at the request of agencies and in response to changes in the state and federal laws. This office has updated classifications for several positions as recently as this year and works to do so collaboratively with department heads as they evaluate the needs of the workforce. The city of Baltimore is in competition, as we know, with surrounding jurisdictions and private sector employers for talent. The city is committed to reviewing job classifications to allow highly skilled and experienced individuals to compete for and obtain positions in our workforce. Our government has experienced relatively high vacancy rates for a variety of reasons such as highly competitive job, the job market itself, other nationwide employment trends associated with the post-pandemic economy. As such, we will continue to make every effort to recruit, retain, and grow talent in the city with a focus on equitable access to city employment. The review and removal of educational requirements for positions that are not highly specialized and do not require professional license or certifications is a means to achieving our goals around equity and employment access. I am certainly excited about and looking forward to the progress that we're making around this and know that a lot of work needs to be done in terms of making sure that we fill all of the vacant positions on our books with highly skilled residents and others interested in working for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Human Resources, do you stand by as favorable?
Yes, we stand by our report.
Okay, Labor Commissioner, do you stand by your report as favorable?
Yes, we stand by our report.
And the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, do you stand by your report as favorable?
Yes, we stand by our report.
Okay, thank you. As we start, we're gonna start with our Vice President of the City Council, Councilwoman
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mine is more of a comment. I definitely, thank you so much for your statement as far as just really trying to update certifications and so on and making, helping our city employees that we do have be trained and certified. But I do agree with this bill and think that we really, one of the problems in our city is that we need to do a lot of training and certification on people, especially folks that are in high school and graduate from high school, so there definitely needs to be that connection to get people right into jobs and work on getting degrees as they're learning the job and so on. There's so many creative ways today to help people be successful. And I thank my colleague for putting in this bill to bring the awareness of this. This is one of the things that's really gonna help bring our city around. So again, the partnerships are so important and connecting our young people to get right into the workforce. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The sponsor of the bill, Councilman Glover, you have any questions?
Yeah, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the questions I do have is for the Dr. Herbert. According to your bill report, once the minimum qualifications are established for a particular classification, they are not changed unless an agency within the city requests an update or the state mandate takes effect that requires the change. My question is, does HR recommend a change when a position is open for an extended period of amount?
Yes, and thank you for the question, Councilman Glover. One of the things that we do is we've been working with our agency heads to address the classification specifications. When an agency comes to us and tells us that a position has been open and vacant for a number of months or for an inordinate period of time, one of the things that we do is work with the agency to go back and look at the classification specification. City Administrator Shorter mentioned that a number of those were updated in this year, and that's because as we look at the class spec and we see that some of them haven't been amended for many years, we go back and look at what the minimum qualifications are and we adjust accordingly based on the market and/or the law. I will also say that in the large majority of the positions that have a degree requirement, they also provide for an experience equivalency so that if a person has a requisite number of years of experience, they can substitute the experience for the degree requirement.
Thank you for that response. I look at things like me being a former, you know, city worker with Department of Public Works, and I've seen many years, and I was there for close to seventeen years, and I've seen many changes within the department. I've seen where, you know, new administrations came in and, you know, they brought in their own appointed positions, you know, the change within those agencies. But I've also seen individuals that have gone sort of through the ranks of those departments that know the job as opposed to individuals that we may hire from outside of Baltimore come here to do the job and honestly, really don't have no knowledge of many of these jobs. They're really going back to that individual who's been there for those fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years. I've seen it and I know that it's going on right now, today, because I've gone around to these agencies, I've talked to the men and women on the ground, and I'm filing that stuff out to be happening right now as we speak. I know that even when it comes to our Director of the Department of Public Works, you know, I know it's mentioned that the degree requirement says that you have to have a engineering degree or been doing the work for at least ten years in those positions. And I look at, again, we have many women that have been here fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years that may not have the degree to be an engineer, but they do have the time on the job and they do know the job. And that's the reason why I bring a lot of this stuff to the forefront because I watched we lose a lot of talent here in the city of Baltimore because of the fact that so many individuals don't have a degree and then they go to the outside of county, make more money, and also get employed by those counties based on their experiences. Another question I have for you, sir, is that how often are the classifications reviewed?
We're reviewing them on a rolling basis, but we review them whenever there's a request by an agency. For some of those citywide positions that are not specific to an agency, we may receive a request again. If there has been difficulty in recruiting or if there have been market changes and an agency says the market no longer reflects that this is what's needed in a minimum qualification, we look at those on a rolling basis. We, what I think is telling, and in our bill report we included some of the data, is that less than a third of our current vacancies require a degree. And there are some classifications that by law would require a degree. For example, our attorneys throughout the city require certain degrees and they have to be barred. There are other classifications, our nurses and things of that nature that require an educational level to receive state certification. But there, we do recognize, and our bill report indicates, we recognize that there are some classifications that are not highly technical or skilled positions where there is room for us to revisit those classification specifications, and we are working with agencies to do that.
And I'm aware that, you know, an attorney or, you know, a nurse, things of that nature do require, you know, degrees, but I'm really talking about a lot of the general services workers, those from like CHDC that are, excuse me, DHCD that are like on the ground, that are doing citations and things of that nature. Like, it's required, I think, for them to have a degree to do the job, but I mean, I don't think it'd take a degree to go to someone home to view and observe that the grass is more than, you know, two foot for them to have to make a recommendation or take a picture and also write down the length of, you know, shrubbery or grass, whatever's in someone's yard. I don't think it'd take a degree to do that. I remember when I first came to the city of Baltimore, I came as a temporary employee, and immediately we had the RAB program that was a program that had got started, you know, through the, it was in housing and it came over to the city of Baltimore. I immediately asked my superintendent if I can go over to the RAB program because, again, I wanted to, you know, learn about, you know, ratification and things of that nature. I didn't go through like a college course, I didn't go through a certification, I was basically, you know what, take Miss Glover with you this morning, show what you guys are doing, and before you know it, I became a pest control worker. I got tired of doing that, I went and got my CDLs and became a CDL driver for the city. So what I'm saying is that when I left the city, I was acting supervisor with mechanical sweep operation. I didn't go through college for none of that stuff, and it was all within. And it's a matter of the individual wanting to reach their potential and go to the next level and have that individual that worked with them willing to train them as opposed to, again, college just isn't for everyone. You know, we also here on this council, we have attorneys, you know, we have past city workers like myself, we have educators, you know, and it require a degree for us to become council members, and we're the ones that kind of sort of make the law of the city. So this is the reason why I'm asking that you guys really dig deep into this because, you know, Baltimore's hurting right now, and our people want to work, but I've had people come to me personally and say, you know what, Councilman Glover, I would love to leave this neighborhood and provide a better opportunity for my family, but because of my education, the income that I'm receiving is not allowing me to move on, it's hindering me, and it's allowing me to stay here and right here in our neighborhood. So these are the reasons why I bring this stuff up. This is the average person that's coming to me and asking me to fight for them because they feel like they're a voice of the herd, and also because of city workers that come to me. I believe that we did lower some of the standards in the Baltimore City Police Department so we could recruit officers to the police department. I think we can do the same for general service workers and other workers in the city of Baltimore. So I thank you and I appreciate you for answering your questions, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, real quick, I have maybe a question for Director Herbert. What is the process that's so different now in terms of the hiring process to human resources? Because I have people apply for a job, it takes so long. We got a shortage of employees here in this city. That process is horrible, I'm sorry, it's horrible, it takes so long, and we still have a shortage of employees, but what's so different that before then, and maybe CA or Shorter, you can answer this question too, have y'all shortened the process for hiring city employees through these different human resources offices? Because I get people calls all the time, they wait and wait and wait, and then we have a hearing where they talk about, well, we got a shortage of employees, we got a shortage of employees over here. But what is different and have y'all changed the process in terms of hiring people here in the city? Because it's real frustrating for people that continuously call my office, say they put in for an application, they had an interview, and then it's just dragging out and then come back before the council here and say, oh, we still haven't hired enough people, we don't have enough employees. I just want to know, what are you doing different in terms of shortening that process in the human resource about hiring people here in the city? Because people want to work, already know that, but to wait and wait and wait and then start calling the office about when that process gonna happen is real frustrating for people who actually apply for those jobs. So is the question, is there any, Director Herbert, could you tell us, can you kind of take us through the process of the steps that human resources use? I know each agency have a different HR, and do y'all all follow the same kind of guidelines in the hiring process here in this city?
Mr. Chair, I thank you for the question. I think that the process, the process is a little different depending on whether or not it's a civil service position that's being recruited or a non-civil service position. A civil service position has certain posting requirements, the posting has to be posted for at least two full weeks. We then get a list of those who have the minimum qualifications, we forward that list to the agency who has submitted a requisition. The agency then, once they have that list, they are responsible for interviewing candidates and selecting candidates for hire. Once a candidate is selected, that candidate receives an offer letter, there is a background check process, if it is a safety sensitive classification, then there is the drug and alcohol, if it is a non-safety sensitive position, then there is no drug and alcohol screening for those positions. What you just described, that a person told you that they got an interview, central DHR did their job. We provided a list to the agency, the agency interviewed candidates that were on that list. It could be that the candidate was not selected. And one of the things we have been saying to our agency HR folks that we have to do a better job of doing is notifying those folks who interview but do not get selected, that they have not been selected. And so to your point, we forward those lists to the agencies of those minimally qualified candidates. The agency then has a part to actually select and hire the person. We work with the agencies to do that, and we are working to get better every day in how we pipeline talent. And I think that many of our agency stakeholders and agency partners would tell you that we have streamlined processes and gotten a lot better at getting lists to them timely so that they can do the recruitment at the agency level, the hiring at the agency level.
So who is responsible for the other agencies at different, like DBW have their own agency, all these different agencies have their own HR, but who is responsible for making sure that their process is a little better? Because a lot of times, you can say you pass it on, but who now making sure that that agency is responsible for reaching out to that particular employee, whether you're gonna hire them or not, whether they got hired or not? Because I'm telling you, it's slow and it's frustrating for people. We can sit here and talk about what the agency doing, but who follows up and makes sure that those agencies doing what they supposed to be doing and there's a faster process in reaching out to those people who were interviewed, whether they were not hired or not, or the ones they are gonna be hiring or gonna interview? That's my question. You can pass it on, but the agency that you passed it on, who do they report to that makes sure this process is a lot more speedy, because it's slow?
Each agency is a bit different. Some of the larger agencies, the HR people report up to the deputy director or the chief of staff, and some of the smaller agencies, the HR person may report to the agency head directly. It varies by agency, and there are a number of factors that the respective principal will weigh in determining what their respective organizational structure is within the agency.
So Mr. Herbert, real quick, are you responsible for those other agencies to make sure, even if they have director and deputy directors? Because you can't just say you're the director and nobody is just like, oh, here you go, we gave you the list and the director's in charge and it's still slow. Are you responsible for those other agencies from different departments?
I do not supervise them, no. But what I do, what we do in DHR, and we've instituted this within the past year, is we have bi-weekly HR meetings with all of the agency HR practitioners where we discuss some of these issues and try to provide guidance to them about how they can address some of the HR-related issues. However, if there is a question about who dictates or who determines the work of those practitioners, that is a question in that respective agency. I don't have supervisory authority over those folks in other agencies.
Well, my question is, if you having meetings with other directors or assistant directors about this particular agency, what is the meeting, what is coming out of meeting that you're gonna do different that has not changed? It's the same thing, you meeting with agency directors, but the process is still slow. You're having a meeting, but what was the meeting for? What was the outcomes of speeding up this process? Because I'm telling you, it's awful, it's awful, and people are frustrated whether they get hired or not, whether they get a letter or not, and you meeting with the agencies. So what was the meeting for? What is the outcome in terms of making this process a little more precise but a little faster? So you're talking about a meeting, but that's just a meeting. So those directors, assistant directors, do they tell you exactly what they're bumping up against and if they And if they are, are those changes being made? Because if they not being made, you just having a meeting.
Well, the meetings, no, the meetings do discuss issues that they are experiencing in the field and how we can address those. What I will say is that one of the, one of the metrics that we track is time, time to hire, number of days to hire. And part of that is on DHR side to provide the lists for, for, of minimally qualified candidates, and part of that is on the agency in scheduling interviews and selecting them, selecting candidates. I can tell you, I get a number of requests to extend lists. Because a, a few years ago, we reduced the, the age of a list. It used to be that a list was good for a year for most jo- job classifications. We reduced that to six months to encourage agencies to expedite their processes. We get a number of requests to extend lists. And for various reasons, agencies may be in various, uh, positions with respect to hiring. They may have interviewed candidates and have not selected candidates. They may have interviews scheduled, and the list is scheduled to expire, and we review those on an individual basis. But what I will say to your point is that we, we do track days to hire, and I'm not prepared today to discuss anecdotal, uh, uh, evidence or anecdotal instances of where there has been, uh, an elongated process. I think that, uh, i- if we look at things that we have done to invest in our digital infrastructure and helping with the HR function, and how we have, have galvanized the HR community across the city, I think that what we would see is that, what the data shows us, is that we've actually gotten better and more efficient at hiring, and we're getting better every day. Uh, there will always be folks who feel that the process did not work for them, or that the process could be better, and we're trying, and we're trying to get better every day with the understanding that in government, we can't, we, we're competing against the private sector. The private sector does not have the civil service rules requirements that we have. They do not have administrative policy provisions that we have. And so they can have a more streamlined process. We are working to get better, again, every day with how we recruit and retain our talent here in the city.
Well, um, I don't know how much better you're getting, but I think we need to have a hearing, bring in the agencies to find out what are they running into in terms of the process? Because to keep saying we getting better and better, uh, I don't see it, to be honest with you. I don't see it. This is, you can say it's getting better, we getting better, but I'm just going to have a hearing with city agency, find out what they running into in terms of human resources so how we can streamline and make it a little better. Because there are a lot of people in the city that want to work. I know that for a fact. But to go through this process about we getting better, I don't see it, and I think we could do better besides just saying it. So thank you, I appreciate it. Uh, Councilman, uh, Steve Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you to the city administrator and the agencies that are present. Thank you to the bill sponsor. Um, do want to say I really appreciate, uh, the thought and intent behind this bill. Um, now, sitting next to, uh, my friend, the doctor over here, our most learned colleague on the city council. Um, you know, we know that some folks come to this work with a lot of education and other folks less so, but if people are hungry to work, then we should give them opportunities to do so. And I think we've seen in city government, uh, you know, a, a, a former mayor who worked himself all the way up the ranks and became councilman and then president and then mayor, and didn't have all the advanced degrees but showed the grit and toughness. And I think it's an important lesson that, you know, we, we, you don't, a PhD, a master's, a bachelor's even, doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to be excellent in this work. And so I want to thank my colleague for putting this forward. Um, and I do have to agree with my colleague from the 12th district that I do see some real challenges in HR right now. It does seem like, I, I don't know what's going on with our hiring process, but I'll just report, and this is anecdotal, but I have a constituent, she lives here in Baltimore. She applied for multiple city government jobs, never heard back anything. And I'm happy, uh, Mr. Herbert, uh, to talk offline about the specifics of this case, but it was really concerning to me to hear from my constituent who, again, lives here, um, didn't hear back, didn't, didn't get an interview. She is incredibly well-qualified. Um, a- and, and so, uh, I guess, I'm curious, you know, Councilman Stokes mentioned sort of the delays in the process. I, I guess, I'm curious because it sounds like this one didn't even get to the agencies. Could you walk me through, us through, when someone applies for the job? What is the message that they get back? What's the timeline? What are the checks in place to make sure it's proceeding along? Um, because, uh, according to my constituent, and I'm pretty sure she's credible, she didn't hear anything from anyone, and eventually moved on and is now working in the private sector, but that's someone we could have had here in Baltimore. Um, so could you kind of walk through, step by step, what it looks like?
Sure. When a person applies for a position through NeoGov, they receive an immediate email that their application has been received and that they will, they will hear back, uh, from the city of Baltimore. The Department of Human Resources receives those applications, and we then review them against the classification specification. For those individuals who possess the minimum qualifications, they are placed on the list of certified eligibles. An email goes out when the list is published that you have been, uh, you're on the list of certified eligibles. You'll be notified i- if you're scheduled for an interview. The agencies re- received the list of certified eligibles, and I, and I think it's, it's important to understand, there are people who may be on a list of certified eligibles. Because you make it onto the list does not mean that you will be guaranteed an interview. You may be on a list and you may not be called for an interview. In which case, uh, there, there isn't a communication that goes out at that point. Be- i- i- in that, 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 I think that's where we can do a better job of communicating.
I'm sorry, could, could, stop right there. So there, when we're not proceeding forward with someone and providing an interview, we, we don't notify them of that?
We, they are still on the list of certified eligibles. So we would not necessarily reach out to them and say, for this particular job, you're not getting an interview, because they are still on the list of certified eligibles. So if there is another agency that is looking for that same classification, they would be in consideration. They're on that list, right? So we are, again, looking at ways that we can do a better job of communicating, but I, I want this, the, the, the board to understand, this committee to understand, that, that we receive tens of thousands of interview, of, of applications every year. We review them and create and generate these lists, uh, routinely quickly and get them to the agencies. Uh, and the agencies bear some of that responsibility in communicating with the people that they engage with. And that's where we have targeted to get better. When you interview someone and a person is not selected for the position, those who have been interviewed should receive a letter saying, thank you for your time, uh, you know, you were not selected for the position. With respect to the other thousands of people that are on the list, they remain on the list of certified eligibles. They may be selected for a position in another agency. Uh, and I don't know that it would be, uh, in the city's best interest to contact them and tell them, you aren't selected for any position that, that, the position you initially applied for, uh, but we're going to keep you on this list. And, and the, the tens of thousands of people that that would impact. Um, I agree with you that there are.
Why, why, why not? Like, why wouldn't, that, I would say, pretty standard and basic communication be in the city's interest?
Well, we, we communicate with people when they are placed on the list of certified eligibles. Again, if we tell them that you weren't selected for this particular job, they, they may say, remove me from the list. We may not have that talent available. We, there are agencies that put in requisitions each and every day. Many of them are for the same classifications. We have people who have applied for positions in DPW who were ultimately hired in DGS because they were pulled from that list. Uh, that gives us a more flexibility with respect to how we can source talent to the agencies as they place requisitions with Central DHR for hire. Now, what I will say is that as we move into our, our, our talent module, our new talent module in Workday, that will allow us to automate some of these additional processes because right now, the minimum qualifications are done manually by our recruitment team. They are sourcing and looking through these documents and verifying that folks have minimum qualif- meet the minimum qualifications. We're going to leverage technology to automate some of those processes, which will allow our staff to be able to have more, uh, of the communication with, with the applicants on the back end. But that, that is still a few months away before we implement that.
Okay. A- again, I'm hearing from this constituent that she heard nothing back from anybody, and so I, I have to, it, you know, I'm, again, I'll, let's talk about it after the hearing.
Let's talk offline, because if she, if she has submitted an application through NeoGov, that's automatic. There's an automatic email that goes out to the applicant, to the email address that they provide that confirms that the application has been received.
Okay. Um, I think there's some disconnect between individual agency website hiring and like the city's main portal. Um, for example, there's a screenshot, um, so DOT, and I'm thinking specifically about parking enforcement, right? Which we have been told, or I've been told over and over and over again, that there is a dearth of parking enforcement agents, so they can't be in the places where people are legally parking. Um, so DOT has a career opportunities landing page that says, no current listings, but if you go to governmentjobs.com, um, which is affiliated with the HR department, there are DOT opportunities. And so where's the disconnect happening? Because I think if I'm a, an average person and I go to the DOT webpage and see no job opportunities, I'm going to assume there's no job opportunities. Um, so why, why, like, why aren't we functioning as a unified system in that regard?
Uh, I can't, I can't speak to that specific, uh, disconnect there with that position. What I will say is that when agencies have vacancies, they submit requisitions to the Department of Human Resources, and we post those positions. We post them in a number of places. We, as the Department of Human Resources, have no control over what an agency puts on their respective page. Um, there, there does appear to be a space for us to communicate better, and I will, I will take that back to our team, uh, to communicate with the agency HR practitioners. But I think this speaks to, um, when you have a, a service that is, uh, not centralized, you, you, you do have these areas of, of disconnect. I can't speak to what DOT put on their website. What I can speak to is the requisitions that we receive from the Department of Transportation and the positions that we post on their behalf based on those requisitions.
Okay. I, I mean, maybe this is a question for a city administrator, Shorter. Can, can we make sure that there is alignment between what agencies are posting and what the central HR website is posting? Because again, I think when folks Google an agency to see if there's jobs, and it says they're not, but then our main portal says that there are, I think it sows confusion in the public among people applying.
Yes. Inconsistent postings or postings where, uh, uh, we have third-party websites identifying jobs that are not being identified on our, that are not identified on our own website is, uh, is not appropriate, and we will absolutely make sure there's consistency.
Great.
Um, Councilman, is that a request? And, and you got one more question after this?
Yeah.
Okay. Ken, what is your request for, um, CA Short?
Request is to ensure that there is alignment between what is posted on individual agency job pages and the city's central HR portal. That make sense? Okay. Um, last question, just back to the parking enforcement agents. And again, this is a job where, you know, to, to my colleagues, the legislation's sort of premise, you don't need a college degree necessarily to write tickets. Um, there, but there are no jobs listed on governmentjobs.com site for this individual position. And again, this is, I think, in a lot of districts, certainly in mine, folks complain constantly about people legally parked, and we can't get the parking agents out. Um, I guess the question here is like, what are we doing to advertise for these types of positions where we hear it all the time from citizens that there aren't enough parking enforcement agents? It's a job that you don't need an advanced degree, um, and yet it's, I can't tell, and I, I do have masters, I can't tell from looking at the website whether there are actually jobs available or not. Um, so what are we doing to, for these like essential, important jobs that are probably revenue generating, I would assume? You write enough tickets, you know, it justifies your salary. What are we doing to advertise those jobs and make sure they are prominently featured in areas where we have need?
And, and real quick, um, um, CAO, are there going to be some incentives? I mean, they don't have to have a degree. If we got a shortage of crossing guards and all these other agencies, are, is the city going to put some incentives there to hire more people? Because a lot of times, you look at the police department, they have incentives. You have other outside Baltimore City, they have incentives, incentive, sensi- incentives. But in Baltimore City, if we have those kind of jobs, what the council was talking about, why we haven't put incentives there to hire more people, to make people now, we can, uh, actually, the shortage of employees we have, we'll see an increase if we attach some incentives to those particular jobs.
Well, I, I'll start, and I know Director Herbert will likely want to add to this as well. I just want to give Director Herbert credit with MOED. A number of employment, uh, events have occurred in this last year where we've done contingency hires, especially for those kinds of positions, where sanitation worker, parking enforcement officer, and other, uh, positions that are what we refer to as frontline. Uh, we get a lot of interest, and we offer a lot of contingency hires where we have the ability to. Uh, even this weekend at City Live, uh, in front of City Hall, we'll be, we'll have HR and other agencies out there doing recruitment and contingency hiring. Uh, so when we have these large-scale events, the agencies are absolutely working to make sure, and DHR in particular is working to make sure, that we're leveraging those events to, uh, to bring in, uh, good hires, especially again for those parking enforcement officers and sanitation workers. Now, that said, the parking enforcement officer is not as simple as you might think. Uh, the, these are not just positions where we would, uh, there are, let me say it this way, there are additional, uh, background and other requirements associated with parking enforcement officers because they are essentially operating with the ability to, uh, enforce. Uh, and so, uh, we do, we are ca- we are careful, and I'm sure Director Herbert will be able to talk more about, um, those employment requirements, but careful in terms of those hires. Uh, I think the other question, well, I'll let Director Herbert go because I don't, I don't know if I remember if, if I answered all of the questions that were asked, but...
Thank you. And, and I, I just want to echo what CAO Shorter said about how we are strategically marketing for the, some of those critical, hard-to-fill vacancies. We have partnered with the Mayor's Office of Employment Development and to, uh, with a partnership with DHR and the Mayor's Office of Employment Development to work with agencies to identify those positions. MOED sources those, those, uh, individuals with those, uh, qualifications, those skills that are Baltimore City residents. And we host, uh, events, uh, where we target those positions, and MOED source, brings talent from the city that has the skill, knowledge, ability, and training, and we have onsite hiring events for those positions. Those have been highly successful, uh, and we've hired, uh... Those have been highly successful and we've hired well over 30 CDL drivers in these last, in these last two quarters from these events. So we have seen, begin to see some fruit from this partnership, which is a targeted approach. We are also thinking strategically and trying to think outside of the box because we are not unique to any other jurisdiction. We are wrestling to fill vacancies. We are, just like other jurisdictions, experiencing the feel from the great resignation and also the silver tsunami, folks retiring, and we are working to fill vacancies. With that, I will say, to again echo what the CAO said, we are leveraging our social gatherings, our, our events that are largely attended like Charm City Live and using those and leveraging the, the, the volume of individuals that come to those events to bring the jobs to the people and to bring the opportunities to the people. And so that's, those are a couple of ways that we are strategically marketing for these vacancies and attempting to fill some of them. But I, I would be remiss if I, if I didn't highlight the data. I, I think that, you know, data tells us and should guide our decision-making. I mentioned earlier how if you look at our vacancies, current vacancies, about a third of them require a college degree. Just to give you some idea of how that tracks with our competitors, in Baltimore County, 76 of their current vacancies require a college degree. In Anarundel County, 48% of their vacancies require a college degree. In Montgomery County, 86% of their current vacancies require a college degree. In Prince George's County, 54% of their current vacancies require a college degree. And so I think if you look at, at our percentage and how we're tracking, we have far fewer vacancies on a percentage rate that require a college degree than our local surrounding jurisdictions, which I think speaks to the work that we have been doing to reassess and reevaluate the number of our classifications where we have an education requirement where it may not be necessary because the classification is not a highly technical or highly skilled classification and we can remove that educational requirement. So I, I just wanted to highlight that as we also highlight the work that we're doing to strategically market and recruit individuals for those critically, as CAO Shorter referenced, frontline positions that are critical for city operations.
And real quick, I just want to mention at the work of John Chalmers, who used to be the bureau head, that process was so short. I'm talking about people who were just been released and people that wanted a job. I don't know what happened, but after Mr. Chalmers left, the process of getting a job at DPW is like, before we had our new transportation system, person had to catch one bus, now they got to catch three. The hiring for DPW in this city, when Mr. Chalmers had his credit, was a lot faster. Right now, I don't know what happened, I don't know if it's Workday or what, but it's, it's very slow now. And I want to just do a request. I would like the positions that open in DPW, all those city agencies, that's a request. All the agencies in the city, what positions, how many positions that they have open right now? We need to know that because we had a hearing here before and talked about these positions that were still unfilled and sound like we're still dealing with the same situation. So I would like a report back on all the city agencies, in particular civil service agencies, civil service positions, how many we have open right now in those different agencies. I'm going to move on to Councilman Torrance.
So I won't belabor because I, you've all made the point about the data, the stats. I just want to go to a different, I just want to go to a different perspective, right? Because if we're having issues with hiring people and attracting people, the biggest thing I get and hear from people is that our salaries are not competitive. They are poverty wages compared to other jurisdictions, especially in positions where we could bring on people with high school deployments and they're not able to, especially someone who is handling payments in the water bill section. And they're making around $28,000, $38,000. And we're talking about in a city that we're seeing things go up and wages are stagnant right now in ourselves. So I think one of the things we need to do, especially for those positions where we need immediate hires, we need to start thinking about incentives for residents as well as increasing those salaries because frankly, Director, the agencies right now are struggling because they're not offering any competitive salaries. Case in point, I'll give an example of a CDL driver that was interested in working for the city of Baltimore. And Walmart list, oh, sorry. Walmart listed positions for $100,000 for a CDL driver. He was unable to get that job, but he went to Baltimore County and drastically made a $20,000 difference than what the city of Baltimore was offering. I think that we really need to start going back and looking at salary classifications, incentives for persons to work in the city, especially with tax credits, because we, our lowest paid persons are getting tax credits if they qualify for it. But how are we attracting people who want to move forward and make advancement? So how do we support them to get their technical degrees? How do we support them in getting their certifications? How are we paying for it? I think one of the things that was lost, a lot of our other jurisdictions, they're paying for those certifications and then they're acquiring, they're asking people to stay for a certain number of years for paying for it. So I think in terms of longevity and keeping people in positions, we have to start thinking about how do we attract and but retain as well? Because when I look at a number of our agencies, the tenure of the persons at those agencies is drastically shorter. So we're burning out people, but we're not keeping them here. So I think we really, really need to dig deep. And I say this to the CAO, going into this budget, there needs to be an align item or some options there for people to actually get incentives in these agencies to hire people. And I, and I say that because some of our city employees cannot afford to buy a house in the city of Baltimore.
You can't, man.
So I think that we need to really think about that $5,000 turns into $10,000 or $20,000 depending on the neighborhoods that we're prioritizing and thinking deeper about how do we do solve many of our systemic issues with our own employees as well? So I just want to leave that comment.
Real quick, before the CEO, if he going to comment, he have to hit a prior, a prior commitment. So he have to leave as soon as he finishes comments. Thank you. Do you have any comment on that? I think what my colleague is talking about, we need to raise, have raises across the board for every city employee. And he's absolutely right. As long as that pay is not there, we will never get a good quality people in the city. So, but if you have some comments, that's fine.
No specific comments. Certainly want to, Mr. Chair, thank you for the time. Thank you, Councilman Glover, for bringing attention to this. And like Director Herbert said, as compared to our surrounding jurisdictions, I think we are ahead of the curve in terms of making sure that the, the positions that where a degree is required, that they are, it is required for, for a reason. And that where there is no reason, we do not have that requirement. On the, on the matter of increasing salaries, we, you're absolutely right, that we are not just competing with other governments, we are competing with other sectors and competing in other, with other surrounding jurisdictions. We are, we are, we have a lot of needs though. And the community, the city, many of our, our other assets in terms of infrastructure all need resources. And so I think what you will see as we are beginning to engage you around the budget, you and your colleagues around the budget for FY24, is an effort to balance those needs. And, and you're absolutely right that our workforce will be included in that balance. And, and whatever incentives, increases in compensation and other opportunities to show our employees that we value them will absolutely be on the table and a part of that discussion.
Thank you. Our Councilman Bullock?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll be pretty brief. I don't want to belabor the point. I agree with a lot was already said by our colleagues. One, in terms of the pay scale is important. Also, I know I've had a number of constituents reach out who've also said that they had put in applications and not heard anything back. So particularly with the Department of Public Works have heard that as well. And then I am encouraged also by what you said in terms of moving toward a more automated process. We definitely want to encourage people to apply to jobs and even having a kind of automatic response saying, hey, you might not have been selected for this particular role, however, you are still in our pipeline and be considered for future opportunities. Because again, we want to still build, again, this pipeline of folks who are applying for jobs and not getting discouraged. So I think we've all made that point today and I don't want to, again, speak much further on it. But again, this is a great opportunity. So I really appreciate you as the sponsor, Councilman Glover, and then Mr. Chair as giving us the opportunity. And thank you to the city agencies who are doing this work.
Council Vice President Melvin.
And just to completely add, my colleague from the first district that had brought up the communication piece is definite, definitely so important, not just from, for outside people that are applying for jobs, but within the Workday system for people that are looking for promotions. And if that, if there's, you know, we still have flaws with that system as far as communicating and, and just even people still getting paid. So it's important that that, if someone is applying within for a promotion, they, you still, you need to keep that communication going and share with them a reason why they didn't get that promotion and what they can do next to get that promotion. Keep, the lines of communication are so important. And for the outside piece, yes, every, any person that applies for a job with the city needs to, you know, you still need to have that conversation with them. That's just, you know, a form of proper etiquette that we are all taught to do. Keep that line of communication open. Thank you.
This next question is for Labor Commissioner. Can you tell us how adopting a policy where we reclassify jobs to move degree requirements would affect labor between, excuse me, labor relationships between the city and the unions? Like how was it, how would it be effective to remove that? I think you put in the report that, that I guess it would be hard to do so. I just, I just really want to know just, again, can you tell us how adopting a policy where we reclassify jobs to remove degree requirements would affect labor relations between the city and the unions?
Thank you for your question. I'm not exactly sure it would really be based on the positions and the unions that are affected. Every union, as we know, they relate to their employees differently. So I would assume if the position requires a degree, then like everyone has said, if the position requires a degree and now you remove that requirement, then it's going to be an issue. But if it doesn't require a degree and the person is capable of completing the task, there shouldn't be much of an issue as far as I can tell.
All right, thank you. This is for the Mayor's Office, I guess, Nina, since you're here. Had there been any communication with the administration or DHR about hiring based on skills and alternative routes, meaning the STAR system? Are you?
So thank you for the question. I'm going to defer to Director Herbert as he may have been more closely participating in any conversations to that effect. Otherwise, I'm happy to take that question back to the city administrator.
Okay. Herbert?
Yeah, I have not personally had any of those discussions. Again, if we can get back to you on that.
All right, thank you. Just to piggyback on some things that some of my colleagues had mentioned earlier. Again, when you go to, you know, DHCD, I mean, is, is a respective position. It's really hard for us as council members to get those individuals to come out to do inspection of properties because they're so short-staffed. And I don't understand why it takes a degree just to, and I've been there with them personally to watch them, you know, get a ruler to measure the grass inside of a yard, to hold a whiteboard, to write down the address and snap a picture of the property where it's to be cited. These are jobs I feel like, you know, just shouldn't require a degree. And these are jobs that are opening that we need to, you know, we need to fill. I know that even myself coming into the council, it was, it was kind of tough to hire who I felt like I wanted to hire in my administration because of the fact that some felt like a degree was required. But I have an awesome staff and I really great at what they do. And some don't have a degree. And the reason why I say that is because even when it comes to the pay scale, just because an individual have a degree doesn't mean that individual can still do the job. I worked at the office of the state's attorney and I've seen attorneys, I've seen ASAs come do, the state's attorney to come to find out, a lot of those individuals, hey, I went to school because I wanted to be a criminal lawyer, but once they hit that courtroom, things change. They no longer want to practice law, well, rather be criminal attorneys. These individuals that we hire, I just feel like if, if it's in our budget to hire who we want to hire, and if those monies are available for us to hire those individuals, I think it should be our responsibility and not HR to fill that particular role for whom we want to pay those monies to. We could go out all day long and find a chief of staff and if that individual to HR doesn't feel like that individual fits the requirement to become a chief of staff, then they're getting paid like the lowest of the tolling pole, when that individual is an outstanding individual and can do the job. So sometimes I feel like as a councilperson that I'm handicapped on what I can and cannot do within my administration because of me being told a certain individual got to have X, Y, Z to get it done. And that's just not the truth. I praise even Jamal, who works for my administration. I mean, we all know Jamal. He does a great job. Jamal is, you know, my chief of staff. He doesn't have a bunch of degrees, but he could do the job. He prepared what we got going on today. He did this. Well, he and I both did this, but what I'm saying is, that's why I need the city to look deeper, dive deeper into the hiring process. I understand what you guys are saying about the surrounding counties. They're not Baltimore. We're hurting. People want to work here if they given the opportunity. But one of the biggest mistakes that I think that we do have here in city government is that the communication between agencies just aren't there. It feels like we're in competition with each other. I heard city administrator Shorter say early on that at Charm City Live, there are going to be individuals there with resource tables for hiring and things of that nature. What's so hard about, you know, sending an email out to the council so that we can let applicants know that it's just not a concert that's going on down there? There's also, you know, resources for employment that's going to be there. But we're finding these things out like today. And it just seem like it's, it's a disconnect between administrations and agencies where I feel like it could easily be fixed if we just communicate. So I'm going to leave on that note. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Glover. Before we go virtual, any more questions or because we're going to go virtual now? Before we go virtual, attendees for public testimony, is there anyone in the chambers who want to testify? If not, anyone attending virtual, please use the raise hand function if you want to testify. There is no one here to testify to raise hand function. So committee members, you have So committee members, you have an amendment in front of you that Councilman Glover is going to read in terms of amendment number one.
Yep. Amendment number one on page two, strike beginning with Baltimore in line nine down through and including labor in line 10 and substitute Baltimore City Labor Commissioner.
Anybody have any questions about the amendment? Okay, we can go ahead and vote on it. Any questions about the amendment, guys? Is there a motion to vote on amendment? Motion by Councilwoman Middleton, second by Councilman Torrance. Stokes is a yes. Councilman Bullatt?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilman Torrance?
Yes.
And by the way, I didn't mention, but Councilwoman Porter is excused. That's why she's not here today. The amendment is approved. Next vote on the actual bill. So is there a motion to vote on the Resolution 21-0104R?
Move.
Motion made by Councilman Glover, second by Councilwoman Middleton. Stokes is a yes. Councilman Bullatt?
Aye.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Porter is excused. Councilman Torrance. The motion passed. This resolution will be placed on second reader on Monday, October 3, 2022. I want to thank everybody for attending this hearing.